...a meeting to order, ties for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue Rollback.
Councilmember Groves.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chambers.
I'm here.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Here.
Councilmember Barkas.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. For the consent agenda tonight, under bold business number eight, I'd like to add for our department quarterly report and shift everything else down. It was supposed to be last week, but we didn't get to it. Any objections to that?
No.
Alright, I'll look for a motion then to approve the agenda as a matter of fact.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle.
Yes.
Councilmember Barkas.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Public comment. Item is not on the agenda.
Quite a lot of us on the agenda.
Yeah, but it's a public comment, it's not an objection.
You, you're talking about Riverside.
Yeah.
That's on the agenda, I'll give you time during the whole.
Thank you.
Yeah, these are items not on the agenda. No? No, period. Okay, well, move on. Fire Department Quarterly Update, according.
Alright. I touched it. Alright, well, thanks for letting me come out here tonight, councilmembers, I appreciate it. As I said, about two, three, four months ago, I come back and give a core report as how things are going. So, it's been a busy, I'd say, first quarter for the fire departments from July, and looking at the timeframe from July, August, September. These summer months, I think a lot of us witnessed was a busy month, as well it was for the fire department. My report, I'll go through the same as I usually do for all the reports, with the chief reports. I'll go through our call responses, our training, prevention, community wellness, support services, and I've included in there as well some of our financial reports, as long as, and our long-range planning as well. So, for my call responses, I looked at from the city of Lowell, the city of Lowell has, during that quarter, ran 131 calls, which is a little above average, but overall, from its departments, we are turning on average, what we're seeing, we're gonna average about 1,200 calls this year, somewhere in that range, so that's quite a bit, that's 100 calls a month, that's about three times a day, four times a day. So if you're hearing us out there, yes, we are busy, we are running quite a bit. Just to highlight a few of the calls we had during that timeframe, we did go up to Lowell Township for a couple of house fires out there, assisted about township in Lowell Township. We also had, and many people may have also seen it, we assisted Cascade and Elto in a couple of fire fires out that way, significant fire fires, losses for those people. But yeah, that was it, big calls out there. Another highlighted call we'd like to talk about is, we also had a call for an incident where a child was stuck in a tree, autistic child, and we also, at the same moment, ended up with a pedestrian that was struck in town that was trapped underneath the car. So during both events, required mutual aid assistance from two different departments that helped us out. So we had to get a ladder truck from Caledonian Township to come assist getting the child out of the tree, which was a successful and happy event for everybody in the family, as well as then ask for help from ADA for their assistance with removing the trapped victim underneath the car, and again. So just a highlight of the day, sometimes the stresses you go through in the fire department, you realize you're going two different directions, you literally are going in two different directions and managing at the same time. So, a couple other incidents that we had that include here in the city, we did have a motorcycle accident in town here that required ARAMET, which kind of ties into our training that we had in, we'll go in the next category, in our training that we had that month. Lockwood Harbor, we did do some training with ARAMET, did an LZ course, had ARAMET land in the park there behind the station, and of course, less than a week later, we ended up having to land ARAMET in the area. So, training put to good use, which was just one of those moments going right now, kind of like Murphy's Law, it happened. But overall, you know, it was good training, the team reacted well, very proud of them, did a good job. Otherwise, some of our other training that we did go through, we did have a state Q course that came through that had a max fire box, they call it, it is a downdhouse that we were able to use for track practicing with our thermal imagers, to look at full pass, and closing doors, why it's important to close doors, and how that works, and how to use these valuable tools we have on the truck, and really use them to our advantage, and how we extinguish the fire in the same manner. So a great course, we had some individuals from Cascade Fire visit us on that day, as well as Grattan, as well as Kentwood, so it was a wonderful Saturday morning that we had at the station there. Great opportunity to have a state course at our place there, and of course, that was all paid for through the state funds as well, fireworks funds. So, great thing that happened there. Some of our other highlight training we did during those months, we did do live fire training out at Thornapple's Burn Center. So the team from Thornapple, again, we went up there, trained at their burn facility, another great training opportunity for our team. We practiced up there with Cascade Fire, Airport Fire, as well as then Thornapple Fire, so that was a good day up there. We did do some tender shuttle practice with Grattan Fire Departments, utilizing the hydrants, because, you know, Grattan, if you didn't know, does not have many hydrants up there. So if we have a request for Grattan coming down here, it may be one of those moments that they would have to use a hydrant for us and help us out and assist, so awesome training for them. Again, another learning opportunity for our team, and interacting and very shake hands with each other. And in the same moment, we did do training with, doing an IEP with Fairgrounds, which was an awesome event as well, working with Kent County Emergency Management, really training the team well on how to deal with any type of emergency, whether it's small or large, and what teams, and who does what and where. It was a good, good training event, and it went to good use at the Fairgrounds with that event that kicked off. For our prevention and community wellness, we did go through the Riverwalk Festival, that was a success. It was great to see everybody out there, see the equipment, and get out with the public. We also then did some medical standby at Fairgrounds, we had a lot of people come visit the station, some homeschool events, the emergency imagination came and visited the station. We figured probably well over 100 people that came through our safety house and a tour of the station, and anytime they come to the station, it's usually a two or three hour event down there, and we show them a lot, train them a lot, and really empower the people to understand fire safety. We also did our annual chicken barbecue at Fallsburg Festival, another successful event, so we thanked the community for their support, great opportunity again to get out in the community, shake hands, see the faces, and not an emergent type event, so that was awesome. We did do the homecoming events, the pink arrow, so again, a number of events, and where we're getting out to, there are numerous, it's exciting to see the public get out there, shake hands, all that good stuff. Our support services, we talked about our fleet, our facility, equipment, our trucks did go through all through their DOTs, so knock on wood, it was a relatively good year, there weren't a lot of things, some battery replacements, general R&amp;M, some exhaust on the truck, otherwise it was a good year for truck repairs, considering the last few years we've had some significant repairs on equipment, this is a win so far. Otherwise, we feel like our fleets and equipments, we're in decent shape heading into the winter months here and where we sit. From a financial standpoint, we did end our fiscal year at July there, start the next fiscal year, we went through our audits, fiscally, we're in, I'd say, a solid point right now. We did end the year with a $20,000 surplus, so that's a good thing, so that went into our fund balance. Otherwise, the audit, the audit was really nothing, because everything was good, we did end up fiscally well, our adjustments to our budget worked out well. So as of today, even now, we're trending level with the budgets, so that's good to see, it's a little bit more comfortable in that standpoint. The other thing that we are working with then is our long-range planning committee, and we look at this from a five-year strategic plan to a 20-year long-range plan. And we are about halfway through that process, the end outcome is we expect to be able to have a presentation, go up to the cities and townships, on exactly where we look at for long range. And yeah, we are at an inflection point for the departments, there are some things that are really starting to become pain points for us, from our staffing, for our equipments, and really trying to put a, paint a picture for the next five years that's pretty tight on our needs, and where we need to go and drive the ship, as well as then a big picture for 20 years, because when we talk about a capital piece of equipment, a fire truck is something that lasts for 20 years. So we want to make sure we make good financial decisions and move in the right direction. So, we're not expecting to see an outcome of that strategic plan until probably spring is coming next year, so we're meeting once a month, if we have to meet more often, we're gonna meet more often, but as always, if there are any city council members that want to come down during those meetings, those workshop meetings, biologists, please come down, input is always appreciated, and yeah. So, any questions? Otherwise, that's my report.
No, I just wanna thank you personally for taking care of me that day out at Creekside, turned out to be my blood pressure medicine, they made some adjustments, so hopefully that takes care of it, so thank you for being there and looking over me.
Yep.
Any other question? Thanks, Chief.
Alright, thank you.
Number B, lead lines, Rich.
Okay, we're gonna talk about some state requirements here. The state of Michigan's Safe Drinking Water Act requires community water supplies to notify the owners and occupants of premises served by service lines made of lead or galvanized material. Federal LED and copper rule revisions expanded these requirements to include notification to premises with service lines of which the lead status is unknown, and to require annual notification until the service line is known, or to no longer contain lead or galvanized material that was previously connected to the lead. On October 15th, the city submitted a complete distribution of service line material inventory, also called a CDSMI, in compliance with the state and federal rules. The city will also have to submit an updated CDSMI report at least every five years, or sooner, per new federal rules. The inventory identified the following: of nearly 1,400 water service lines in the city of Lowell, the lines are categorized as follows. We know there are nine lead services in existence in the city, 69 galvanized services, 545 unknown service lines, and 771 non-lead, matured to copper or plastic. Michigan's rules require owners and occupants to be notified within 30 days of determining the premises served by the line that contains lead or galvanized material, or the lead status is unknown. And at any time the new utility account is opened at one of these premises, the notification must include, and then we have listed in the communication of what's required for lead services, what's required for galvanized services, and what's required for unknown services. In general, they're all about the same, such as statement that the service line material is galvanized, or lead, or unknown, explanation of the health benefit, excuse me, health effects, not benefits of lead. I corrected. Steps that can be taken to reduce exposure to lead in drinking water, information about opportunities to replace lead or galvanized service lines, and language encouraging customers to have a home plumbing evaluation to identify potential sources of lead in premise plumbing. Notices will be provided by US Mail, or another type approved by the state, for our instance, we're gonna be using US Mail. The city of Lowell will be issuing the required letters in the next week. In the communication, we give you a link of where you can learn more about sources of lead and what can be done to reduce exposure. For our side of this, what we're doing to prepare for the community questions is preparing training material for staff and the public, publishing the water service line inventories at the city's website, about very soon, providing a link to frequently asked questions, developing a GIS map link for the city's website to graphically depict the status of water service line material inventory on a city map, and developing this visual aid for the public to understand the variety of material types and service. Now I do have that visual aid blueprint, if you want to pass it around, you can look at it. Try them, I'll hold it up for everybody to see. Pass that down. So on that board, we're just depicting a plastic line at the very top, we're usually blue or black, right below is copper, one's a new copper, one's the, one that's turned a little bit green from age, below that is galvanized, and then very one on the bottom is lead. And we put a magnet on there as well, so you can distinguish, the galvanized lines are ones that a magnet will stick to, lead just looks like galvanized sometimes, but magnet won't stick to it. So that's just an example of what kind of training material we're putting together for residents. Also included in your packet, we have each of the three draft letters that'll go up to residents, and then a brochure about what's changed in Michigan's 2018 lead and copper rule. So this is information only, city council can request a work session to get more detailed information about the Safe Drinking Water Act requirements, or the federal lead and copper rule provisions. If there are very technical questions, by the way, I have Ralph Brecken here from the Water Department tonight too, and we'd be more than happy to respond to any questions from everybody, hopefully most of them I can answer.
Questions?
Is there area in town that is more affected by the different types of lead pipes that are there, is there an older section that we should be more aware of? I know I live in a house that was built 1870, remodeled, but where are those areas?
So I'm gonna have Ralph come up here, I know most of the answer, but Ralph knows the very specific things. So there was a year which lead service lines were cut off, and basically we switched to copper. Also in the city, when we did the water, excuse me, the sewer and storm sewer separation, a lot of our lines went to copper, but not always on the private side. Generally, for the areas prone to lead service lines, it's gonna be the older part of the town, areas like Valley Vista probably don't have a lot of lead, if any. We did find a few on Washington, do you have any problem on Washington to replace?
We found one lead service line on Washington. Majority of what they consider lead would be galvanized, but, or galvanized lines that was previously connected to, with lead. But to answer your question, the area here on the east side of town, we consider the highest probability, and looking at the age of your home. But that would mainly be from what we call the service valve, or the property line to the home. Back in around the early 70s, when the city went through a storm sewer separation, the vast majority of any lead or galvanized lines within the street right away was replaced by the city with copper lines. So during our Washington Street project, we only found two that were not copper, within the street right away. So what we're seeing is mainly on the private property, and then within the homes, so as far as that.
And they stopped using, excuse me, they stopped using lead around 1974, '75, was it, or later?
Really, they really start kind of from the back, early in the 30s, but there was some leftover inventory, but I think around the early 50s is when it was completely banned, so to answer your question there.
Any other questions?
I know the city is responsible for any pipes up to the supply pipes, you call them, and then the homeowner is responsible. No, could you? I'm just, I guess what I'm asking is, of these numbers that are, that are listed here, are any of these the city's responsibility? For instance, the unknown service material, is that the city's responsibility?
Yeah.
We're responsible for all of it. There was a, there was a, there was a court case when the lead and copper rules came into place, because technically, they viewed it as a headly violation, because it was deemed an unfunded mandate, but the courts ruled that water and sewer are what they view as voluntary, it's not something the city has to provide, so it didn't apply to that law, that law, that, that law didn't apply to the situation. So we are responsible for everything, we had 20 years to fix them, but the federal government just is working on a regulation that they want all lead lines eliminated in 10 years now. And they provided, what, $2 billion?
Yeah, not, not nearly enough.
Yeah, not enough to help us with addressing it, so it's born on the regulators. I mean, unless we can try and get grant funding, but I can tell you right now, we're gonna submit, now that we've had our reports, we're gonna submit grants, we're very highly competitive, and the more the prostrut communities get them first, so just understand that.
Thank you. Yeah, so bottom line though, if your service line is part copper, part lead, the city is responsible for replacing all of the, all the lead pipe?
Only in this situation. A normal situation, where it isn't considered a lead line, then from the property line to the home, it's a financial responsibility of the homeowner or property owner for the repair maintenance. But because of the state and federal laws, in a lead service line condition, like we're talking about tonight, then the municipal water supply, the city is responsible from the water, all the way to the home, it's the first 18 inches within, within the home, or to the first valve, whichever is first.
Yeah, we'd be happy to go more in-depth in a work session if you wanted.
Yeah, I think that's where the most value is gonna be. I think if we let everybody get their letter, and check their FAQs, and then we have a work session before that first December meeting, then we can pack as much information in as we can. That'll give people time to compile questions, or people who get letters and don't understand to reach out to us, and then.
That first, that first meeting is the, is chief.
Oh, that's right, the meeting week.
We can do it in.
Yeah, we can do it the first meeting of the year. Yeah, nobody's going underground in the winter anyway, so. Yeah, we'll do that, then we'll work session at the first meeting of January, and then answer any questions people still have left after the information blast network. Any other questions for Ralph or Rich? Okay, thanks, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Number C, Riverside Drive.
Good evening. On Tuesday, October 22nd, we removed the traffic barriers at Washington and Elm after our three-month test. Within 24 hours of its removal, the city received four calls from residents asking why the barrier was taken down. When I reminded them that it was temporary, period, all were supportive of keeping the traffic barrier on Riverside Drive. Our staff did not observe any major issues during the closure, although we had some instances of cars traveling the wrong way. Council also had concerns regarding downtown traffic, and the placement of the trash carrier in the parking lot on Riverside, which staff will continue to monitor. Some residents expressed concerns about the foreclosure, primarily because it limited their ability to cut through Riverside. A few nearby residents also voiced objections, although most did not live directly on Riverside Drive. During this time, several Riverside residents thanked us for implementing the barrier. I heard numerous times from residents how this improved their quality of life living on Riverside Drive. If we consider a permanent barrier to the one on Lincoln Lake, there are some logistical concerns. If it includes grass or landscaping, who would maintain it? A permanent burr may not be the best solution. Snow removal at Riverside Road as a staging area for parades are also considerations, and we don't want to interfere with these activities. Staff have suggested that once Riverside is paved, we could consider using a gate at Riverside and Elm that can be opened during snow events, parades, or other emergencies. If we proceed with this, we would ensure proper signage and reflective markers for the gate. Steph and I are in favor of this idea. I had reservations previously about speed bumps in the past, particularly not permanent ones. However, after recent, I've had some recent trips out to the east coast, and I've seen these asphalt for speed bumps, and speed tables that's effectively used in residential areas, and areas that have weather environments similar to ours. They're all well marked, and my concerns about damages from, snowplows from what I saw were minimal at ease, and at ease, that eased my concerns. I observed many speed bumps in the last couple of weeks in those areas, and I didn't see one damaged speed bump, so I was actually pretty impressed with that. Rich and I have been discussing this further, regarding these requests we may get in the future. One possibility would be possibly if there's a request for us to do something such as a signature, maybe requiring petition, where anywhere between 66% to 75% of property owners in the street want a petition for a gate or a speed table installation. You know, with some of we could consider obviously funds being available and all, but I assure, assume we'll get some more requests. We also like to consider these requests, if, for, for traffic control, the speed bumps and such as that, as we start planning for upcoming street process, street paving projects. So Rich and I are working on preparing a draft policy for you to consider on these in the future. In my conversations with many residents, they have expressed a preference to reinstate the barriers until a permanent solution is determined. We're tentatively planning to pave Riverside in spring 2026, and will seek CDVG funding from Kent County next spring to pave Riverside, and the cross streets from Riverside to Hudson. If we don't receive the grant, we will still plan to pave Riverside and Elm. The availability of funds will determine our ability to address the remaining streets. I believe it is essential to find a reasonable solution to the speed issue on Riverside Drive. We need to recognize that no matter what we decide, not everyone will be satisfied, but it's quite critical that we find a solution. So we're open to your, your input on this as we continue.
Alright, we'll take a public comment first.
Hello, I'm in Metlisma, and I lived at, I live at 525 North Hudson Street, and I took it upon myself to make a listing of people that can sign a paper that says that for, these are our reasons that support the restricted access of Riverside Drive. The first one's safety, that the restriction of traffic helps, you know, facilitate walking, and bike riding, and just safe play for children along that narrow road. The second reason was for road wear, with reduced traffic, the road surface, which is the responsibility, in my understanding of the city, would be reduced, so that would reduce city cost, and then it would tangentially help our property value, because some of us are sandwiched, almost literally, between two freeways, because we've got semis on our front door, and we've got whizzing traffic on our back door, so there's not much buffer between the traffic on both sides. So the number of places I went to was, the houses aligning the road, there was 21 that were for the restriction, one against, and two not home, so.
Can you give those numbers again, 21 for?
Yes, 21 for the restricted traffic flow on Flat River Drive, one was against, and two people were not home. One of the group that was not home, I've talked to just informally, and I get, I got the impression that they are for the restriction, and the clears weren't home, so I called them in Florida and got a verbal from them, so that's, that's what I got from the people I contacted. They mentioned things like the speed bumps and whatnot, but I think just informally, the impression I got was the gates, they could be changed to allow snow removal, it was preferable to the speed bumps, because you're still gonna have the noise and the sound on the corner. I live at the corner of Elizabeth and Hudson, and there's a manhole cover that's not right, so it's, boom, it's like bombs going out on the front of the house. So I don't know what the sound of those cars hitting the speed bumps would be, I don't know, the noise is a big factor on that road, so I think just with the gates, it just makes people mindful that they're in a residential area, and not just a cut through. So this is what I found out from asking all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Matthews, 326 Riverside. At this point, Rich, we can get to talk about the health benefits of lead. Great segue into the health and safety benefits of what has been going on on Riverside with the restricted access throughout the summer. Obviously, there's personal benefits, many of us live there, it's quieter, it's, you know, far safer and all, but I think the bigger issue from a community perspective is the safety aspect of it. There's a new bus stop with little kids right on the corner of Spring Street and Riverside, and, you know, when cars get cranking coming around that corner, as we've observed since the barriers have been down, nowhere near at the level that they were before, but still, we're, we're seeing it. You know, there's just even a greater safety concern, so I'm really concerned about the, the safety benefits, as well as all the other benefits that are mentioned, that's certainly supported. Continuing to look at issues that would resolve those, the barrier worked real well for us as far as we're concerned, and we appreciate the city and the city council's efforts to, to address this issue, so we certainly would be in favor of, of continuing to do that, as you've expressed, Mike, in your, in your goal, so we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Jared Schwartz, 426 Riverside. I'm just gonna, Barry's been down for a week and a half, something like that, near. In the two weekends that's covered so far, I've been outside most of the time, trying to heat up ten, and get some weather, and it's an anecdotal observation, but I would easily estimate traffic's gone up in that timeframe by a factor of four or five. I can't say I've actually been doing numerical counts, but it's, it's a huge difference already. So I was surprised it went up that fast, that quick, that much to that degree that quickly, I figured it would take people time to realize it was open again to use as a shortcut, but I guess the internet age takes care of that, so.
Thank you. Was this letter in the back end supposed to be read, or?
No, I just, okay.
Thank you, over at 982 North Washington. I, I of course.
Um, I, of course, don't live in Riverside, and I certainly understand the concerns that have been expressed and whatnot. I'd just like to say from my perspective as just someone from the public that growing up here, Riverside was always the street that we would use, just because of the scenic value of it. And it was just easy coming from the center of town just to pull in, you know, on that street from Main Street and go up. And it's really been disappointing to me to not have the ease of that, not for speed, not for avoiding the light, but just because that's such a beautiful area. To me, it's the most scenic little stretch in town. And so for me, I guess, and I know this wouldn't be as convenient for those of you that live there as far as the speed bumps are concerned, but to have that full barrier there, that's just very disappointing to me, as just a member of the public liking to be able to use that street. So, thank you.
Uh, billboard is 215 and a half West Main Street. Thank you for taking it seriously. It has, we noticed an immediate, we overlooked the parking lot. We noticed an immediate increase in traffic. Keep in mind the parking lot areas possibly considered speed tables, speed bump in that area. The barrier did help tremendously for safety sakes, so thank you for taking it seriously.
Thank you.
Kimmel Deluie at Riverside. So I'm still kind of the newcomer to the Riverside block. Certainly have appreciated the barriers, and if that worked better than I thought it was going to. I miss coming down there and driving down there too. One of the things I'm surprised that I talked to Chief First about this, that you can turn right right after Elm Street and still go down Riverside. And I'll choose to do that sometimes. I was surprised more people didn't start schooling that and, you know, hitting the gas and going, but that they haven't. So I guess as far as people cutting to the neighborhood, I agree, I love that. When we lived on Murray Lake, coming to the bakery and all that, we would take that a lot of times too, just because you're right, it's a really nice drive. But you have that option to turn right after Elm. You just have to train yourself differently. Again, we kind of end up like sheeple, like sheep, right? We're used to just our, our normal routes and all that, and don't really break out of what we're used to doing. But sometimes we just need to do that, so if you really like the road, like to drive down the road, I don't think anybody wants you not to drive down the road, we just didn't want you going eighty down it, turn after Elm.
Thank you, thanks.
Hello, Steve Doyle, 706 Riverside Drive, around Riverside Drive, so front of the house and Hudson's, the back of the house. But thing was super positive, great idea to do that, the access to be blocked. I think the gate idea makes, you know, perfect sense. You have parades, they need to be open for snow. But, but the speed and the total amount of traffic, you know, something close to four thousand cars per week, if I recall. And it is a local street, and it's narrow, and, you know, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and so I think it's from a safety standpoint, it's, it worked, and after about two days, you could tell. And it's not that you can't, you know, turn on any street you choose after Elm and, you know, drive down Riverside Drive. So we, you know, thank you for the idea, and we think it's a real positive. Annette Ritzem is, her canvassing of everyone on Riverside Drive. There are, there's twenty-six properties, and I think there's twenty-four property with homes, twenty-four with homes. And she, I don't know, it's close to a hundred percent.
She got all twenty-four.
Yeah, all, all twenty-four, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council feedback?
What I've noticed is, obviously my building's there, over there to Earl's. When the barrier was up, it, we took cardboard out to the dumpsters, and I didn't have, mind having the girls that work for me take it out there because the traffic just wasn't zooming. And we don't want to take them down, and I get a phone call from one of my ladies at work for us, and she's like, holy crap, that car went around me like a hundred miles an hour, so it did help a lot. I think it made, Sabora is busy, Craig's Restaurant's busy, you get Regan's, the dentist office and all that going on. It slowed them down, so I'd like the idea of the gate or more of the gate than the speed bumps.
Um, I guess I'm having a hard time picturing like what kind of gates?
You know, okay. Ever seen game of drums?
No.
I'm assuming we're talking about one over here.
Yeah, it'd be like a swing gate, if you reflect up, it would be marked.
But black like we have in the parking lot now?
Uh, if you reflect up.
Yes.
Well, reflective tape or something.
Yeah, probably reflective barriers, reflective signage, turn having people turn. But yeah, we can come up with different designs, I don't have really come that far ahead. But I mean, I'm doing something else, we can gate.
All we gotta do is give a bunch of designs to Annette, she'll take care of it.
Come on! But yeah, I mean, we can, but I mean, yeah, we, you know, we, we can find something, I look online, there's different that you can do.
Jim?
Um, I don't have a feeling either way, because once, whatever we do here, probably going to have to do in four or five of the streets in town. Because what, once we set the precedent that the neighbors can kind of direct us and dictate us to what we want to do, that's okay with me, but because I know when we come down, talk about the stop signs on Monroe, what that's going to do is drive up more traffic on Jefferson, which I live on, and we already have a high volume of traffic. We have a high volume of speeders. So when we get to that point, talk about Monroe, I'm going to ask that we have more, try to get more law enforcement to do more code enforcement and enforce the speed limit on Jefferson Street from semis to whatever. So again, we have issues going down both roads, we have issues on Foreman. Would this be the, it's not just Riverside, it's all over, so I just want to make sure that what we do, we do it right, we're going to do it consistent moving in the future as we move forward. That's my concern, we're going to set precedent in Monroe, Alabama.
My two concerns are pedestrian safety in the restaurant area, number one. Now, I totally agree with the Riverside residents and the, than five thousand cars, that's a problem. But number one, pedestrian safety in the parking lot and in the restaurant area, number one. And then to have the, that is the busiest bypass road in the city, just that five thousand cars is crazy. And I do agree with Jim that whatever we do should be fair to all residents, because there are other cities, I'm sure, or I'm sorry, other roads that have troubles. I've heard from neighbors over on the west side of Hudson that say that this barrier has increased traffic on him and things, so I'm, I'm a little bit torn, but I would, I think testing either the speed tables that Mike Burns has mentioned or maybe the narrowing that Rich mentioned, I'd like to, I'd be up for testing something else, that's something that can be used elsewhere.
I use a couple of different metrics, a public comment. How many times do people come here and tell us we're doing a good job? Zero? The answer is zero. We're talking about a metric that Mike and Rich are trying to set, and their high bar was seventy-five percent, but I meant when I've got eighty-eight percent, okay? Earl's got a bird's eye view with Eric, they can see it for a good amount of, a good distance, Marty's people are outside. I sit in Charlie's office a couple of times since we put the barriers up and I notice it. I don't know if you've had that same, yeah, please, you got a good view there too?
So I do watch Riverside quite a bit, and I don't know what the answer is, but I can tell you that it's been, the change was appreciated because it makes getting in and out of vehicles, leaving our parking area, our employees are much safer. So I don't have any firm numbers, but anecdotally, it made a big difference. It directly made a difference in the safety of our employees, which I greatly appreciate. Again, I don't know what the answer is, if it's speed tables, if it's a gate, but I think controlling the speed through there is something that benefits the community.
Thank you.
And I agree, safety, it should be the number one, the number one thing on the list, that our community feels safe when they're out. That should be any other topic.
The other metric that I find interesting to me is the number one concern complaint that we've ever gotten since I've been up here is roads, and how they're terrible, and how we need to fix all of them right now. But you're getting people now that are saying if you're not going to put the barriers back up, don't even fix our roads, right? That speaks volumes, I think. I think the gate is the best option. If it ever changes where the twenty-one for become twenty-one against, or people move, or traffic patterns change, or community changes, the gate can remove, and I don't want to go in there with the entire road construction crew and remove a bunch of speed limits or speed tables. I also think for stuff like the parades and access to that downtown area, accessibility is important. I think at minimum right now, that we need to put those barriers back out there tomorrow. That's my opinion, but there's a lot of people in favor of making that a safer place, and I think the barriers did that to a, to a certain extent. And it's easy, right, we can put them up there tomorrow, and we have forever to come up with a permanent solution.
Yeah, then once we, you know, when we pave, you know, when we pave the street twenty-six, put that part of the project, put a gate in.
Yeah, well, I mean, for now, for just right now, I would make a motion that we at least reinstall the barriers tomorrow. And then we can move forward with Riverside Drive and all business or...
Yeah, you said that, Corey, how would the fire respond to that then, with that gate up? You're going to put a...
Just go to the next street.
Just go up to the next street and then come back? No, I just want to make sure that they feel comfortable.
I mean, if they're aware, I mean, if they're, I mean, absolutely, a fire vehicle is a lot bigger than a police vehicle, but I know from my experience, that they should, I mean, they should, you know, if they get a call, they just go to the next street. I mean, it's, you know, and they're going to be coming off of Hudson anyway, they're not going to be going down Riverside. They're going to be coming off of Hudson anyway, most likely.
All right, any other feedback, questions, concerns, or for supporting the barriers?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we reinstall the barriers tomorrow and work on a permanent one going forward of all business. I'll support any other discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Barkus?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
All right, we're into new business, stop sign on Monroe, sorry.
All right, now that construction in the North Monroe and North Washington area is nearing completion, we are focusing on measures to slow down traffic in this area. We are planning to construct traffic islands on Monroe Street next spring. In addition to the frequent complaints about trucks on Monroe Street, traffic speed remains an issue, especially during shift changes at Navia. Traffic moves particularly fast at these times, and although the police department works to address this, they cannot always be present during the peak hours. After discussing this with the police chief, we would like to propose adding stop signs on Monroe at Avery and Marsak. This would create a four-way stop at Division and Avery. We hope this step will help address the concerns of Monroe Street residents. Since the city has never issued traffic control orders, council approval is needed to install stop signs. If the signs prove ineffective, we can always revisit the decision and consider removing them. I recommend that the whole city council put a replacement of stop signs on Monroe Street and at Marsak and Avery.
Um, I'm kind of with Jim that, for the stop signs, eventually we have to look at Washington, right? Because Washington has been so bad for so long that once they get their, on it, they're going to scurry down that and they're going to bypass Monroe, so, and then where Jim lives, I'm not opposed to putting a four-way stop there too, just to control.
Yeah, I think I would be, yeah, I, if you, if you would like, because I was thinking about that too. I've been getting obviously calls and complaints on Monroe, I haven't been getting them on Monroe and on Washington. I get them intermitt, I don't get them that much on Jefferson, but I know it's an issue because of the trucks. If you'd like, you can come back and with stop sign, you know, locations for stop signs on Washington Street too, once the road gets paved.
Yeah, even if we stagger, right?
Yeah.
Isn't there one now by the elementary school stop sign?
Where did?
There's one there.
Where does Division come into this? Why does it say a four-way way down at Division in Riverside?
Well, Division, I'm sorry.
Is that supposed to be Monroe?
Monroe and Avery, yeah, I was, I'm sorry, that was a...
No, you're good, I was just...
Yeah, no, Monroe and Avery would be where it's at, and then we would have, it would just be two-way, Monroe and Marsak.
But it'll stop going north south?
I'm sorry, what are you talking?
At Marsak, isn't, there's already one going east, right?
Yeah, I believe there's already, yeah.
So that would be the three-way stop, another four-way at Monroe and Avery?
Yeah, correct. And then we would, but I mean, if you, I mean, now that Washington and Jefferson, I mean, we can, we can come back with ideas for that as well. Because I do agree that, you know, we, you know, we should, if there's an issue, we should look at it. Because, and true, and true, I mean, once Washington's done probably next week, that'll be a drag strip as well.
And we do it to Monroe, it's just going to move to the next street, the next street.
I agree, I agree.
The other thing is, isn't Avery a little far south? And if you're coming off Fulton, it's just this block here, you're not known at that much speed anyway.
No, but it's the southbound, it's the southbound.
Yeah, but you're, I mean, you're already slowing down to stop here, right?
Wouldn't it be more effective at like game, right in the middle?
Well, we do have a lot of cars that go in the area with a parking lot, and going into the parking lot, the library and that, so I thought maybe it'd be much safer to put it there.
Didn't you have some feedback too from the businesses?
Yeah, one of the requests was they were pretty adamant they would think the best solution would be at Monroe and Avery. I bet we feel that way.
I'm not opposed to start, let's, let's try and see how they handle it, and, you know, come back and we can discuss Washington and and Jefferson down the road, and let's see how it works.
Yeah, I can bring, I can bring something for Washington, Jefferson for the next week, if you'd like.
Yeah, but I think we, if there's a way we can stagger back, right? So like Jefferson, you've got that sharp turn going down.
Yeah, on the first street, or they're, they're north of the first street coming back. So you get a good avenue for the turn down the door street, there's no doubt about that.
Right.
So you've been, you've heard them?
Yeah.
Coming by, so...
I don't know about Avery, but, all right, any other questions? I'll look for a motion to a replacement, stop sign at Monroe, on Monroe and Marsak, and then...
I'll make that motion.
And I'll support.
Any other discussion?